Two, one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. Sit back and enjoy yourselves. We have an agenda chock full of items this evening. This is your friendly reminder to please silence or better yet, turn off your cellphones. We're going to move into the invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight, led by Council Member, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Everyone, please bow your heads and remove your head coverings. Appreciate that. Our heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to join together here this evening and consider the things that we need to talk about for the betterment of our city. Thank you for all of our city employees that have done an outstanding job through the trials, tribulations we had over the last weekend. Thank God that there was no injuries to people during that wind event. And bless us and forgive us of your sins, of our sins, excuse me, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. At this time, I will ask our Clerk, Mrs. Knight, to please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Mr. Schwizer.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Move to excuse Mr. Twist.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Schwizer to excuse Mr. Twist and seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes. Mr. Twist stands excused. At this time, we're going to slightly deviate from tonight's agenda. We have a special guest in the audience tonight, Commissioner Ted Mercer, to provide a small presentation.
Good evening. Mayor Oda, President Lutz, members of Troy City Council and city staff and members of the community. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Robinson Fund. The Robinson Fund has many, as many of you know, is a donor designated fund managed by the Troy Foundation. Due to the recent tornado in Troy, many of our trees in our city were destroyed. Many of these trees lined our city streets and neighborhoods. Trees were also lost on the river levee as well as the cemetery. Many of these damaged and destroyed trees have been in the community for over 75 to 100 years. Troy has been a community where our trees have always been a great asset. There's nothing more appealing than seeing a city with sprawling green canopies covering the landscape of Troy, not to mention the many different colors that trees leaves produce in the fall. Mr. and Mrs. Robinson, who is with me tonight in the back row there, understand the importance of reforesting our community. They do not want the city of Troy to lose the significance of tree-lined streets in our city. With this said, the Robinson Fund would like to allocate a grant of $10,000 for Trees for Troy to be distributed to the city for the replacement of these trees throughout our community. This grant of $10,000 will allow the city of Troy to purchase approximately 65 new trees to be planted on public property throughout the city. This grant will start the process of restoring the beauty of our trees and our community. The Robinson Fund named this grant Trees for Troy, and we ask that the city of Troy accept this grant. And again, I'd like to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Robinson. Would you mind standing? These are two of the most generous people I've ever known, and I think their names speak for themselves. So, but we talked about this, and we thought, what could we do to help? And we thought by helping, you know, $10,000 is a start to start replacing some of these trees. I know someone mentioned there were no injuries in Troy, but there are a lot of broken hearts. A lot of my neighbors had devastation to their trees, their homes, their garages, and so forth, so we feel this is one way to start the recovery. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer, and thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Robinson, for your timely and generous donation for our community. That is very much appreciated, and thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. At this point, I am going to call on our Chief, Chief Simmons, to do a special introduction this evening of a brand-new firefighter for our community.
Thank you, President. Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome to City Council, also to the President, one of our newest firefighters. We'll call Dakota Brown at this time. He is one of our newest members, started work January 6th. We got to know Dakota through the few years that he got to help us, seasonal work for checking our hydrants. And you guys might recognize him also if you ever had a propane tank filled at the tractor supply here in town, because he would work for us during the day checking hydrants. And I went out there one evening, and I'm like, what are you doing out here? So, he was working hard to pay for college. He is a 2019 graduate of Hocking College with a degree of Associate's Degree in Fire and EMS Services. So, we're very pleased to have Dakota here today, and we at this time like to call Mayor Oda. She has another little presentation for Dakota Brown here. He's also a local graduate of Miami East High School.
Class of 2017.
Nice to meet you. This is your probationary badge for your helmet. Give us one good year, we'll give you a permanent one. I have no doubt you can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Brown. Best of luck to you, and thank you, Chief Simmons.
Thank you.
At this time, I will ask the Clerk to please read a summary of minutes of our January 6th, 2020 meeting.
Minutes of Council, January 6th, 2020. Ordinance Number 01, 2020. Employing Clerk was given first title reading and adopted. Mr. Phillips was elected President of Council pro temp. Mr. Twist was elected Clerk of Council pro temp. Resolution Number R1, 2020. Authorizing sale during the calendar year of municipally-owned personal property on Internet auction sites was given first reading and was adopted. A presentation was made on behalf of Health Partners Free Clinic. Mr. Lutz announced the committee lineup for the coming two years. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:30.
Wonderful. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Schilling to approve the minutes of the meeting. Oh, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, we will enter into the committee reports portion of our agenda. Our first report tonight comes from the Building and Utilities Committee chaired by Mr. Allen.
Thank you, President Lutz. This committee met on January 13th to consider an amendment to the 2008 sanitary sewer agreement with the Board of Miami County Commissioners to remove the Heritage Village subdivision at Troy Country Club subdivision from the county's billing, as the subdivision is now within the city and customers should be billed at the city rates. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an amendment to the September 5th, 2008 agreement between the city and the Board of Miami County Commissioners to account for the monthly billing associated with Heritage at Troy Country Club subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do any council members have any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next report from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairperson, Mrs. Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on January 13th to consider an annexation petition filed on behalf of the Troy City Schools Board of Education, Patricia A. Harshbarger Trustee, and Linda F. Rocco for a total of 43.591 acres on McKay Road and on State Route 718. Based on the state law provisions for an expedited Type II annexation, there's a very short timeline for council to consider legislative action. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Troy Schools Harshbarger-Rocco annexation of 43.591 acres from Concord Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions from members of council this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the Community Partnerships Committee chaired by Mr. Rozell.
This committee also met on January 13th to consider the recommendation of the Board of Park Commissioners, the council permits overnight camping at the Troy Community Park and adjacent park areas and for the recreational fire pits at Troy Community Park for participants in the Greater Ohio Bicycle Adventure, GOBA. GOBA participants will be in Troy June 27th through the 20, June 24th through 27th. Ordinance is prohibited camping and fire pits within the city of Troy Park. It is a recommendation of this committee, notwithstanding legislation, be prepared to permit temporary camping at Troy Community Park and adjacent park areas and to permit recreational fire pits within the Troy Community Park areas by GOBA participants for the dates June 24th to 27th, 2020 only. This is respectfully submitted by committee members Zach Allen, John Schwizer, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions from members of council tonight on this report? Moving on, excuse me, we will go to the Law and Ordinance Committee chaired by Mr. Severt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to actually read the detailed report, because I think it's more explicit than the one-sentence summary report. This committee met on January 13th, 2020 to consider recommending that a portion of Pickle Troy Road be changed to North Market Street. The meeting was attended by Council President Lutz, council members Allen Phillips, Rozell, Twist, and Twilliger, the Director of Law, the Director of Public Service and Safety, and members of the city staff. In recent years, through annexation, several properties along Pickle Troy Road north of Troy Urbana Road have been added to the city. Development along this corridor has occurred, and staff recommends extending the street name of Pickle Troy Road to the north from the intersection of Troy Urbana Road to Locksley Lane. At this time, no existing addresses will need to be changed. Therefore, it is recommended, it is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared changing the road name of Pickle Troy Road to North Market Street from the intersection of Troy Urbana Road to Locksley Lane. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schwizer, Miss Snee, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Do council members have any questions on this report? Moving on to the last report of the evening, the Recreations and Parks Committee chaired by Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. The Recreations Park Committee met on January 13th, 2020. The committee members, Mr. Twilliger and Mr. Phillips, met on January 13th, 2020 to consider recommending bids for the fireworks show for July 4th. The intent is to bid for a contract of up to three years, not to exceed $36,000 per year. It is a recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the July 4th fireworks show for up to a three-year period at a cost not to exceed $36,000 per year. Respectively submitted, Mr. Bobby Phillips, Mr. John Twilliger, and myself, Jeffrey Schilling, Recreation Park Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will move into the Citizens' Comments portion of the meeting for those items that are on the agenda. We have five resolutions and four ordinance this evening. If you wish to speak on any of those items, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to speak. Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper this evening. Seeing no one coming forward, we will move to the next item of business, which is to approve the rules of council. Do we have a motion to approve the rules?
Sounds of.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Phillips to approve the rules of council. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Excellent, the rules of council are hereby approved. Moving on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R2, 2020?
Resolution Number R2, 2020. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a First Amendment of the sewer agreement with the Board of Miami County Commissioners. This is to extend or clarify where the boundary is for billing for city services of sewer. This is the first reading.
Counsel?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
The resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R3, 2020?
Resolution Number R3, 2020. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a fireworks show. This would be up to a three-year agreement or contract not to exceed $36,000 per year, which is budgeted. First reading.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Excellent, thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R4, 2020?
Resolution Number R4, 2020. Resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 43.591 acres more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is known as the Troy Schools Harshbarger-Rocco Annexation, and this is required to be provided to the county within 20 days of the annexation filed with the county. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Schwizer. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Wonderful, thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R5, 2020?
Resolution Number R5, 2020. Resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 43.591 acres more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is the standard buffering statement also for these Troy Schools Harshbarger-Rocco Annexation. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Wonderful. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution of the evening? Resolution R6, 2020.
Resolution Number R6, 2020. Resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 43.591 acres more or less in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is also regarding these Troy Schools Harshbarger-Rocco Annexation, and this is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schilling to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution this evening. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have disposed of all resolutions. We are moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O2, 2020?
Ordinance Number O2, 2020. Ordinance releasing mortgage lien for William E. Boss III and Mary Louise Boss and declaring an emergency. This loan was made in the year 2003. It has been paid off, and the lien now needs to be released. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mr. Rozell to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O3, 2020?
Ordinance Number O3, 2020. Ordinance authorizing a name change of a portion of Pickle Troy Road in the city of Troy, Ohio. This is from the intersection with Troy Urbana Road to the center line of the intersection of Locksley Lane, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Rozell to suspend the three reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
It has been moved by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Swazer, to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 4, 2020?
Ordinance number O. 4, 2020. Ordinance authorizing the use of Troy Community Park and adjacent park areas for the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure Goba event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio. During the period of June 24 to June 27, 2020, this will allow the Goba participants to camp in Troy Park and adjacent areas and to also have a recreational fire pit. First reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to suspend the three-reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
And Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schilling to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening? Ordinance O. 5, 2020.
Ordinance accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing two one point eight two three two acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy. This is known as the Hyler's Annexation, and this is the final acceptance of that annexation. First reading.
Suspend the rules, please.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schilling to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Rozell to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Busy night tonight, Mrs. Knight. Thank you very much. Moving on to communications and announcements. Do we have any tonight, Mrs. Knight?
Only to remind you of the need to file the financial disclosure statements. I believe that you probably received an email message from the state. You can do that online. If anyone needs any assistance, please let me know, because there are specific deadlines. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Knight. At this time, we have a special nonprofit presentation from the Troy Rec and Executive Director Kelly Snyder. Kelly, if you would please come to the podium and give us your presentation this evening.
She gets the big pile. Well, thank you for allowing me to come today, and I especially want to thank Mayor Oda, and congratulations on your new position. I want to thank Troy City Council members and City of Troy staff for your continued support of the Troy Rec and all that we do. For 79 years, the Rec has served as a community recreation center with a primary emphasis on youth, and that mission really has never changed. It's always been about the kids. We are very proud to be a part of a vibrant and active city that values their citizens and, in particular, the kids that live there. I'm amazed sometimes when I think about how our building is used. It is used from 7:15 in the morning until 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night on most days. It is a busy, busy place. Weekends are booked with parties. A lot of birthday parties happen there, indoor soccer games, private ballroom dance lessons, rec dances for the kids, movie nights, and our most recent rental, The Valley Church. And on a side note, most of you know The Valley Church is going to be moving to the Sherwood Shopping Center. We have had a great relationship with them for a year and a half now. They've rented from us. It's been a good, financially, it's been very good for us, because it was a rental, but it's also been a good, just a good partnership. They've been very good to us. They did some upgrades to our electric that they needed, and of course, it's going to stay there for us to use. Their last service was this past Sunday, and they're moving in. Their new, first Sunday in the new place will be this coming Sunday. We look forward to continuing that relationship with them, even though they're no longer in our space. Our before and after school daycare just celebrated 25 years of operation with affordable and safe childcare for Troy citizens. It was a challenging year for us in our daycare, because many of you know our daycare director, Janet Lark, was often caring for her husband, Tim. As you know, Tim is a Troy city electrician, and he was hit with a life-altering illness here, and Janet was often called away unexpectedly to care for Tim, but our staff was able to fill in the gaps to keep our services running, and I think that's just a testament to her organization skills. If anyone knows Janet, she's super organized, and because of that, we could fill in where needed, and the processes were already in place because of her skills. We are in our eighth year of operation of the Smart Start Preschool. We are at full capacity, 48 students. We offer an enriching and engaging curriculum for our youngest learners and really enjoy the energy that the preschoolers bring to our building. But most of what we do and what most people think of when they think of the Rec is geared toward our sixth through 12th grade students who drop into the Rec Monday through Friday after school. They can play basketball, game of pool, ping pong, or just hang out with their kids. They can receive, or with other kids. They can receive assistance with homework. Sometimes they want assistance with their homework. Sometimes they don't really care about their homework, but we're still so thankful that we have that space for them to come to and that we are able to serve them in that capacity. We know that we are a safe landing spot for them, sometimes the only safe spot, where they feel comfortable enough to open up and share their day. We're blessed with an extraordinary staff that truly loves and cares for these kids and where they're going in life. So before you, you have kind of the nuts and bolts, all the numbers of how many people come and who comes and the organizations that we serve, but I just want to hit a few of the highlights, and then you guys can peruse that on your own later. We are seeing between 70 and 80 kids daily. That's a lot of kids in one space. Friday seems to be our big day. It's usually 100 or more, and that's a pretty steady average for us and one that is manageable with our staffing. We're very fortunate that our game room staff are dedicated to our kids, and they've all been with us for close to four years, which, in the game room attendant world, that's longevity. We're very glad they're there. This year, we added some very specific training for our staff in behavior and youth mental health first aid. We're seeing an increasing amount of kids that are dealing with home issues, food insecurity issues, mental health issues, and unfortunately, those issues manifest themselves at the Rec, sometimes in bad behavior or acting out. So we're working to give our staff some tools to be able to assist those kids and help them work through the issues or be able to direct them to the services that they need. This summer, we again partnered with Troy Foundation, Partners in Hope, Garden Manor, City of Troy Schools, and Lincoln Community Center to offer summer lunches to any youth in the city. We've operated a summer Lunch Buddy literacy program for 17 years, but this was our third year offering lunches to any student. It was wonderful being able to serve these kids, and we saw an average of 25 to 30 kids daily, which is a huge increase for us. Our numbers drop off considerably in the summer, but since we've been serving lunches, it's stayed pretty steady at 25 to 30 every day, and we will continue that partnership again. This past year, we were once again the Torte Donut registration site and headquarters for the Torte Donut team and organizers. It's always a lot of fun having them in there. For the 2019 Torte Donut, we redistributed leftover donuts to other nonprofits and agencies after the race was complete. So here's some interesting numbers about donuts. There were 255 boxes of donuts left over, which is 510 dozen, and that's a total of 6,120 donuts that we were able to get to other people. There were also coolers of yogurt, milk, as well as boxes of fruit that made its way into the hands of those in need. Our Troy Rec Community Helpers is a group we started a few years ago and has a mission of connecting our youth to the community through real-world engagement. We take our group of kids out once a month to sweep and pick up trash in the downtown area, and we continued our partnership with the United Church of Christ, helping pack weekend backpacks of food for elementary students. And what came out of the packing backpacks for the elementary students, we realized there was another need, and that was for our older kids. One of our students that was assisting with packing the backpacks made the comment that their sibling received that snack bag every week, and we realized there is no safety net once they hit sixth grade. So sixth through 12th graders do not have that supplemental food going home. So we started a weekend bag program for our kids. It's open to any sixth through 12th grader that needs supplemental food. We don't ask them income. We don't ask them anything about their family. At this age, they know what's going on at home. If they need it, they come and ask for the bag, and they take it home. Excuse me. We have been abundantly blessed with monetary as well as canned good donations to help support this initiative, and we know that kids perform better in school if they're not concerned about hunger. We're always looking for ways to help our kids be successful, and this is just a small way to ensure that they have the food they need over the weekend so they can start the school off, the school week off strong. Our goal with this group is always to introduce our youth to volunteer opportunities and give back to the community that so graciously supported our organization. What's interesting about a lot of our kids is they don't have volunteerism modeled for them at home. So this is just an opportunity for us to model that, and hopefully, as they go forward, they will remember that, and as they become adults, they will continue to give back to the community. Some of our other programming for youth is geared toward giving them some tools to deal with the stresses of their day. So we've offered twice-a-week fitness from Hybrid Fitness, vision boards so they can learn to dream big and kind of look outside of their current circumstances, and a cooking club. This week, they're doing smoothies, and they're really excited about that. For a second year, we've offered the Ninja Obstacle Challenge fundraiser. It's been a great addition to our recreation offerings and a great fundraiser for us, and we will again offer that in November. I just want to, again, reiterate on behalf of the Board of Directors and staff and myself and our kids how much we appreciate the City of Troy's support through the years. I would love for you guys to stop in sometime. I'll give you a tour. For those of you that haven't been in it for a while, it's changed a lot since you were a kid. If you used to come when you were a kid, I'd love to have you come in anytime. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Do any members of council have any questions for Kelly? I do have one question. Did the closure of the Triple J Childcare Center have any impact on your operations, and if it did, could you describe that?
The only impact is we got a lot of phone calls asking if we had any openings, and we do not. We have, we're very fortunate. We are full every year with our daycare. I wish there was more daycare available. It's truly a need in the area, and we know that by how many calls we get, but unfortunately, we're kind of landlocked. We can't expand, but we would love to, so.
That's true. That facility's back open.
It is. There's a new facility there?
Yes, it's under, I think, a different operation.
Different operation.
And just as a note, we were talking, someone mentioned the tornado stuff earlier. We did have a little bit of damage, but it was not considerable. We had a tear on our rubber roof that was easily fixed, and our fire escape, though, got damaged considerably from some of the debris that came over from the thrush building, but that was, it's been repaired as well. But we're very fortunate and very thankful that we did not sustain any damage, or a lot of damage.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce to you the Honorable Mayor of the City of Troy, Robin Oda.
Thank you, Bill. I just want to say thank you again to the Robinsons for their donation. What an amazing donation to the city. Please let them know that we really appreciate that. Also, thank you to our city staff and crew that just so quickly jumped on the cleanup efforts in Troy. And while we don't want to diminish anybody's damages, we are very thankful that there were, nobody hurt, no houses destroyed. Certainly, a significant amount of damage to buildings and homes, and we're prayerful that those will be fixed quickly and without, with minimal impact to our families. Kelly, thank you. That was an awesome presentation. The Rec does a fantastic job. I wanted to just say, extend our condolences to the family of Patricia Chavis. She was a member of our Board of Zoning Appeals, and she passed away this week. So she's been a part of that board since 1997, and so we just extend our condolences to her family, and there will be a replacement made at some point, so I think that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. City Director, Mr. Titterington, do you have anything this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind everybody that, well, February 1st is a key deadline, I guess. We will accept real Christmas trees, no lights, no plastic, no, no nothing, just trees, until the first. In light of the tornado damage, we are picking up brush and debris at the curb again through the month of January. The dime mill facility will not be open, because that is a seasonal employee, and there's a lot of logistics. So when people call, we're just telling them, you know, pile it at the curb, and we will get it as soon as possible. I think we're keeping up fairly well with the damage. And then the third, last but not least, don't forget that there are a few piles of leaves that are still accumulating, and we are picking, we are in the third round, third and final round, and we will pick those up along with everything else again through the month of January. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Titterington.
You're welcome.
We will move on to our Law Director, Mr. Kerber. Any words of wisdom this evening?
You're asking a lot, President.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. Any council members have any comments that they would like to make this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Swazer.
I would like to thank everybody who helped put on the Martin Luther King Team event yesterday. There was probably about 150 to 200 people that attended the ceremony, or the celebration, I should say, over here at First United Methodist Church. I'd like to take a moment to specially thank Joanne Anderson from the Lincoln Center to say that she really did a phenomenal job in making it happen this year. I was not as, I wasn't able to be as involved in it this year for some personal reasons, but Joanne really stepped up and really put everything together. I think her and Mrs. Knight went back and forth on a number of things, and it came off very well. So thanks to the community. It was a very nice event.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer.
Mr. President.
Mr. Severt.
I have two, well, one question and one comment. First question, it goes to the Fire Chief. What is a good intent call? They're the second largest portion on your graph, and I didn't know what that meant.
Those calls would be where somebody has an issue.
Those would be calls where people would just want us to come and check something that they're, sometimes there would be something left in the stove where it created a lot of smoke, or it's not an actual extinguishment, where we go there to check it out.
Okay, so just like a public service call?
Yeah, it's not an alarm call for, like, say, a hotel where they have a smoke alarm blowing off, but it's where residents call if they have issues that they want us to come and look at to make sure that there's not a distinct fire hazard, but they want to make sure.
Thank you. And second, and maybe you will say this as well, so I'm not trying to stomp on your toes, but I would like to congratulate Tim Davis. It's glad to have him here today as our first meeting as our Economic Development Director, and we're pleased to have that promotion being done in-house, and I know the people that I've spoken to in the community are pleased with that choice and are looking forward to a, working together with you and continuing to make this city thrive. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Severt. Any other council members have any comments this evening?
If I may.
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Question, Mr. Titterington or Mrs. Rhodes, do we have any update on the villages of Concord? I know that we've been dealing with that for a long time. It's been on our tickler file of items of interest, and are you looking at, Mr. Kerber? Is there something there that we answer my question?
I believe it was in, it was in late November or December, the Planning Commission approved a proposed subdivision with a couple of conditions, and the applicant for that subdivision apparently was not pleased with that outcome and has initiated some litigation or appeals process or both. There's a number of filings made in that regard. So on the city's behalf, as well as the Planning Commission's behalf, there's been some responsive pleadings filed with the court, and, you know, at this point in time, it doesn't appear that the applicant is going to go ahead and try to satisfy the conditions that were placed by the Planning Commission, but it's still an unfolding story.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I'd like to echo Mr. Severt's comments towards Mr. Davis. That's an excellent promotion and what's well-deserved, so congratulations. Also, Mr. Beckner, a retiree from the wastewater treatment plant, he's an acquaintance that I've known for a long time, and he's, it's a good thing he'll have in retirement there. I also congratulate the city workers, all of the staff that responded, police, fire, electrical, maintenance department the night of the tornado. They were outstanding when I was downtown, speaking to some business people and some of the staff there. Also, MetroNet, which has answered a call at my residence, they went overboard with their service, had no idea of my elected position at all, so I was pleased that it was handled as a routine matter, but they did, they did a very good job. I haven't completed it yet, but they're doing it. So all of the comments that have been made to me off of MetroNet and other items around that, I'm just glad to see it in person when it personally affects me that it was an outstanding job. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other comments from council members this evening? Any council, any comments from city staff that might be in the audience this evening? Seeing none, we will go to audience comments. Now is your time to speak on any issue that you feel so moved to do so. Please come to the podium, clearly articulate your name and address, and the floor is yours.
President Lutz, Amy Shannon, 1650 Windridge Place, Apartment D, Troy. Two things. First is, we do have our food pop-up pantry this Saturday. Mr. Titterington has already shared it on the city page on Facebook, which I appreciate greatly. If anyone is interested in volunteering, we can always use help. Mr. Phillips has already volunteered to transport some folks to the pop-up pantry in Pickwa. Next month, we'll be at Stouter, and we're looking forward to that as well. We're going to have about twice as much food this time as we did the last time, and again, we're looking at frozen meat and lots of produce is what we're providing to folks. So looking forward to that. The second thing is, as a city resident, I would like to say thank you to the city staff and all the first responders. I saw Pickwa spent quite a bit of time down here the night of the tornado. I've spoken with a number of the people that were impacted that lived in the transitional housing and in some of those areas, and they had talked about how quickly people were there to try to help them and give them some support and help them figure out what they were going to do. And so from everything that I saw, it really did seem like a very tough situation was handled really, really well, so thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak tonight? Please come forward. Seeing none.
Bill.
Excuse me.
The mayor wants to talk.
The mayor, the mayor liked the floor. Mayor Oda.
We had an overwhelming response of volunteers immediately following the tornado, and probably 50 to 75 people called, groups, youth groups, sports teams, families, people with varying different kinds of equipment called to volunteer. different kinds of equipment called to volunteer, and they're sitting on a list, and honestly, we've not had the calls for help, and that speaks to neighbors helping, neighbors, families helping, just an overwhelming response. So thank you to everybody that has volunteered. We still have that list. If we are called, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no one that is coming forward, at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting is February 3rd, right here at 7:00. Until next time, take care of yourself. Thank you.